I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, December 5th, 2019. If you will stand and join us for a moment of silence in a pledge of allegiance led by Councilperson Karen Nassar.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk of the police call the world?
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Crosson.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. It's our tradition to have 30 minutes of public comment on non-agenda items. If you don't have an agenda, there are some up here at the front, and you're welcome to come up and get one. So if you have a comment at this time on something that is not on the agenda, you may make a brief comment. We do ask that you hold it to three minutes so that we can move ahead with the agenda. Thank you. Please state your name and address as you come forward.
My name is Donald Hyde and I live at 1411 Public Street. Well, it's December. You've got this board meeting and one more, and the year 2019 is over. And 2020 will begin January 1st. You've had an interesting year, but I do not see where you're making much progress preparing for the things you've passed. And what I mean by that is your tourist business is supposed to be helped by that one thing I can't even come up with when I want to say it.
Convention center?
That's it. And the biggest thing is preparing for the jail. And I want to... Not the jail, sorry. The gambling. When I was a kid, gambling was legal. I'm old enough to be there, and a few of you are too. And there was a big movement back then to bring about the end of gambling because gambling came with problems. And Terre Haute didn't deal too well with those problems. And they tried different things, and it didn't seem to work. The gambling got worse. So there was a big movement and a big battle amongst my parents and grandparents to eliminate gambling in the city of Terre Haute, in the state of Indiana for that matter. And they did it. And things were different when the gambling went away. Didn't say it cured all the problems, but it made things different and better. Reason I say you're not properly preparing for it is because I can remember quite vividly -- I'm great details anymore, I'm too old -- but I do remember quite vividly the way Terre Haute was in the '60s, and especially the way it was 50 years ago in 1970. We're going to come up with 2020. Well, guess what? 2020, January 1 would be the equivalent of January 1, 1970. It would be 50 years ago. Gambling had been made illegal. The city of Terre Haute could get convention centers here because they could have people showing up and coming here. And above all, what you want to do is bring business here. And trust me, in 1970, Terre Haute, businesses did come here. Now, it took a while to get them here, but they came, and we got the history in our own minds of the ones that came. They were big. And we just lost the biggest one here just a few years ago.
Mr. Hyde.
But what I'm saying to you is, how did we get those businesses to come here in the first place? I've already told you, it was that safety net. The safety net matters. You've got to reestablish the safety net. Now, in 1970, what was here that's not here now? The YMCA, the YWCA. The Boys Club has downsized and moved from where it was to a smaller place, still old and not as many kids. The Boy Scouts were the best in the state. We had competitions. I was in them. There were other adult organizations that were there then that are not here now. You're doing -- I don't see the city council or the county council, I'll be fair, and the mayor doing anything to figure out how we can rebuild our inner structure. And I think before that gambling casino gets here, you're going to have to properly prepare for it. And remember what I told you. My first words was in 1960, you know, 50, '60s, that YMCA was here.
Mr. Hyde.
I know, I'm wrapping up. The YMCA was here, the Boys Club was here, the Boy Scouts were here, and several other organizations long gone were here, and yet they couldn't deal with the gambling, and they voted it out. What have you got that's different than what they had then? That's what I want you to think about over this hour of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like a public comment? Okay, then we'll move on. Is there any corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Any communication from the mayor?
I did not receive any.
I had reports from city officials. I've heard reports from city officials that I'm unaware of. We are looking at our calendar internally here for next year for city council, and I think all council people have one in front of them. We do have to vote on this either tonight or next week. If you're comfortable tonight, I think we can go forward. If you're looking at the Yell, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong about the color to the colors, represent the nights that we would meet, and they would, under this plan, we can certainly consider another plan, but under this plan, we'd continue to be the first and second Tuesdays of the month. And also, I think, although it doesn't state it, I assume that we would continue certainly meeting here and meeting at 6:00.
Just to interject if I could.
Yes.
The two that may be in question is April because Good Friday is after the second regular meeting, and July 3 is after the first regular meeting. The blue is holidays, the green is area planning's meeting dates.
So I don't know if anyone has any discussion that they want to have about this proposal?
Madam President.
Yes.
A couple of things. First, are we close enough to the January meetings to be able to discern whether having our first meeting before area planning meets would be okay?
I do not remember any new rezonings being filed that are not on the agenda. And the filing deadline, if I could, is next Friday.
Okay. That's, you know, the one thing that I saw that hadn't really been mentioned. The other thing that I feel like I want to bring up, just because I've brought it up before, I don't feel real strongly about it, but I think that considering meeting on the first and third Thursdays rather than the first and second Thursdays might even out paperwork and make this a little bit, make government a little bit more responsive to our clients, the public. I've raised that just because it seems logical to me, but again, I'm not really invested in this. I would be interested in hearing my fellow council members and the courts' opinions on that, whether we're ready to take that step or not.
Just a quick comment if I may.
Sure.
It's one of those situations of you can't win either way. So if you move to first and third, that really changes the dynamics of the filing deadlines, which could be helpful. But it also, in some times with the holidays, puts a very small business day crunch in there of how many days we have to prepare stuff, especially during Christmas and Thanksgiving, moving them to the third Thursday. But we also have time crunches on first and second, so not very specific, sorry.
Yes.
Madam President, I'm of the mind that first and second Thursday of the month hasn't worked well within the last three years that I've been on the council, four years. I think I should stay as is if no one objects to that.
No, we were a little bit concerned last year because it was the first year that we had had no sunshine meeting, but we had voting meetings two in a row. We were using this past year as a bit of an experiment to see how that worked. My own thought is that that's worked pretty well, and that it hasn't caused any problems that I'm aware of in the scheduling here that would be significant. So if we hadn't had that year, I might feel a little differently, but...
And if I may, I think Councilman Nation brings up a point. The first and the third might potentially be better, but again, I haven't found any issues with the first and the second, and maybe the first and the third brings us problems we're not expecting. That's my own thoughts.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, interject one more time. You'll also need to announce the reorganization meeting, which should be at 5:45 prior to the first regular meeting in January.
Right.
It used to be on January 1st.
No, yes, Amy.
President, I don't know. I know in the past we've had problems with July, with that being on the 2nd and people being on vacation. I didn't know if there's any way we could move, just a suggestion I'm throwing out there. If we move July's meeting down to the 9th and the 16th, actually that would...
I was going to say that works well because there's five Thursdays in that month, so
it doesn't...
I just know before, we have a lot of us that weren't going to be here and worried about having enough of us here, with that being July 4th weekend.
Yep.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
And just a reminder about Good Friday, if you want to make any changes. Now, that one is a harder month to move meetings down.
Didn't we, I know the first part of the year this year, we had a few meetings that we didn't have anything on the second week. Is that one of them?
Last year, when you voted on this year's meeting dates in July, you didn't have, I think it was July, you didn't have a second meeting anyway.
Okay.
You could do that in April, and you need to have some.
Okay. Well, Madam President, if there's no other questions or comments, I make a motion that we make the meetings for 2020, the first and second Thursday of the month, except for July, that it would be on the 2nd and 3rd Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM in the City Hall courtroom.
And at 6:00 PM, and the reorganization meeting.
And the reorganization meeting will be 5:45...
January 2nd.
January 2nd.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nassar and seconded by Councilperson DeBon, that the calendar as proposed with meetings generally on the first and second Thursdays of the month at 6:00 PM in City Hall, with the exception of July, which will be the 2nd and 3rd Thursdays of the month. And that our reorganization meeting for the year, that 5:45 PM on Tuesday, January 2nd, be approved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so clear. Thank you. I have one other short report I just wanted to make tonight, and I make it now simply because there's been a few references to it in the press. The county council has been working on making some fairly drastic revisions in their tax abatement schedules. And as doing that, they had invited some other people to participate in that, and I wanted to report to council just briefly on that. They had invited myself and Councilperson Azar and clerk, city clerk, Michelle Edwards to participate in those meetings. Because of scheduling times, I've, Councilperson Azar and city clerk have been not as able to go as often as I have. But they are coming up with some fairly significant changes in their abatement process and forms. And to be completely fair about it, their process is much less sophisticated, I think it is fair to say at this point, than ours is, and that's one of the reasons that they embarked on this. But they also realize that to the extent that the city and county can be somewhat consistent, that that's an advantage for development purposes and that sort of thing. So they invited us to be a part of that. They are already kind of moving forward on what they're going to do, and my thought is that after the first of the year, we will probably be in a position to say, these are some things we might consider as small amendments and that sort of thing to our process, so that we, A, so there are some things we probably need to change in our process anyway, like the minimum wage that's listed is pretty low right now, and that sort of thing. But to bring it forward here, but there have been some reports in the press indicating that we were going to be voting on something right away, and I just wanted to say that's not where I see our role in this meeting has come out, and I just wanted to report it to other council members tonight. So I would say that, you know, we do have a standing committee that considers these things, and at some point, it should be Mayor Bailey Wood to do that. We were just asked to sit in on this so that we could provide information to the county as they went through their process and feedback. Steve Witt also sat in on that from redevelopment in EDC. So I just wanted people to know about that at this point. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Is it, Madam President, I'm sorry. Is it, are we bound to make it comparable with the county, or we're just going to try to?
No, I just think the thought was, and we had had some input from the development, economic development people, that when people come from other communities, they're struck by how different it is, and that it's a very different process, and if they don't already know where they're going to locate, or where they don't already have a piece of land or a property that they want to locate on, how it might be really different if it was in the county versus the city. And so if there were ways that we could be consistent and still serve our unique constituencies adequately, that we might, you know, want to consider doing some of those things. And frankly, I think the county has looked at a lot of the things that we have done and is going to incorporate, you know, some of those things anyway, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? Okay. Thanks. Is there any report from the Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
From standing committees?
I know them.
Any non-standing committees? I don't believe we have any items previously tabled.
That's correct.
Are there any tax abatements for confirmation?
There are not.
It doesn't appear that we have anything on second reading.
That is correct.
Okay, next item of business, then.
General Ordinance 6, 2019, admitting city code, Chapter 4, Article 20, Section 4-290 and Chapter 6, Article 4, Section 6-69 and 6-75, and creating Chapter 6, Article 6-72.1 and 6-82 harboring chickens.
I think probably I should speak to this, if that's okay, although Eddie, certainly you've directed this, please chime in, or Todd and Curtis, too, were involved in this. We've previously reported to you the report of the committee, the special exploratory committee that we had on this matter. Those recommendations were taken by City Legal and put together and put into this ordinance, which is before you tonight. And so I think that's basically what I have to report. I think we've reported the specifics previously. If anyone has any questions after we've asked a public comment, I think we can probably answer those. Anybody, Eddie, anything else you want to say about it at this point? Okay. Okay, that being the case, is there any member of the public who would like to speak on General Ordinance 6, 2019?
This is the one about the citizens being able to have their own chickens?
Yes.
I have no problem with that. In fact, it's long overdue. We have a society, and I'm talking about not just Terre Haute, but the whole country, that's crazy about health. I see no reason why if people want to have raised chickens and do it right, and have healthy eggs, because it would be in their own best interest if they're going to do it, do it right, so you can have healthy eggs and eat it to their kids, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening. Madam President, fellow members of council, my name is Richard Shagley. I reside in Terre Haute, Indiana. I want to first thank the council for taking up this issue and meeting on it several times. As you have been made aware, this is an important issue to many of our residents of our community, and your time you invested in looking at the issue is appreciated. I wish this would have happened in June or July. Due to the cold weather, my chicken supplies or my egg supplies are low. I was intending to bring each a dozen eggs. I've seen that work with other departments and getting what they wanted.
I'm allergic to chicken.
I have duck eggs, too, to satisfy those concerns. It's funny, Councilman Nassar, that you brought up allergic to chicken. As I think I've mentioned in one of our previous hearings, a good friend of mine who raises his own chickens has a child who has severe allergy to eggs. And until you have a child with severe allergy, you don't realize what that does to a family. You know, when it comes to eggs, so that's birthday cakes. So every birthday party at school, every birthday party at home, you've got to make sure that there's something for your child that doesn't have eggs in it. He started raising his own chickens, and his child can eat the eggs that they raise, which is concerning in that his eggs or his chickens are fed organic feed, they don't have all the who-knows-what, and, you know, the health side alone is another time discussed. But I just, the point of all that is, there's a lot of reasons people want to raise their own chickens, and there's a lot of great benefits to that, and I would hope that you consider passing this ordinance. As I've also previously discussed, I don't anticipate, you know, this happening, and all of a sudden there's going to be lines at Rokeen and Tractor Supply tomorrow. You know, to be honest, I think people who want chickens, most of them already have them, and I don't anticipate a huge rush, mainly because there are a lot of work. It's not like a dog that you can leave in a kennel and you'll be fine. You have to let them out, let them in, or, again, as I previously mentioned, there is no such thing as an irresponsible chicken owner. The first time you're not responsible is your last day of being a chicken owner. There's a lot of predators who roam our streets and our alleys, and they will take care of any irresponsible chicken owner. But I do appreciate, going back to where I originally started by saying, I want to thank this council for looking at this issue, for taking and considering it, and I would hope that you would pass this and allow the people of our community to have chickens legally. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Richard, I do have a question for you. As someone who's raised birds or chickens, and as an attorney also who appears before us often, have you read this ordinance, this proposed ordinance?
I've not read it.
Oh, darn.
Word for word.
Well, I was going to ask you what your thoughts were about the actual ordinance itself.
The, I believe six is the legal limit.
Eight.
Eight. I would like to have seen it by size of lot. I was unable to attend any of the meetings. That would have been my recommendation, is it would have gone by lot size, not just a blanket eight. And then, you know, I think, what's it say about inspections?
Well, they're like, all of our inspections right now, they're going to be complaint-driven, I think.
Yeah. I just, I think it's lot size, but other than that, I just think people are going to be happy to legally have them, because I think 90% of the chicken owners will have six, because that's what you... What's funny is, it's illegal to have them in the city, but I can go buy them right now in the city. But the law says you can only buy six, minimum of six.
You can only sell a minimum of six.
You can only buy it. Yeah, well, yeah. I have a friend who went in and tried to buy one, and was told he had to buy six, and he even suggested, can I pay for six and just take one? And they said no. So the person bought six.
Yeah, I want him as a customer.
You know, that's the only thing, I think, I think you'll see selfishly, I'd like to have seen it by lot size, but, you know, I just think this is a step in the right direction, and it is complaint-driven, which I appreciate, and I think that's a good way of doing it.
Okay. Thanks, Richard.
And I apologize, I have not, I did not read it word for word. I apologize for that.
Fair enough. One little follow-up on the number. Of course, we reviewed a bunch of different ordinances, they range, the numbers range. And one data point that came out of all of it, and this may jive with your experience and may not, is that a chicken produces just under, on average, one egg a day.
Correct.
So for most families, you know, I think eight chickens, you're going to have like half a dozen, six or seven eggs a day.
Oh, absolutely.
It should be plenty.
That's absolutely right, Councilman. You will average just under one egg per hen per day. And, depending on what, a lot of times you can, a lot of people like them, because once you've had a fresh egg, a real, not real, I guess isn't the proper term, a backyard egg, you will know the difference, and it's tough to go back from that. And you brought up an interesting point. Hens, I do agree with, no roosters in the city. They're mean, they're loud, and you get more chickens. So I think hen only is a good part of that.
I think almost all the samples I've...
The ordinance is...
Yeah, I didn't see any in our state that allowed roosters.
I don't think there, I don't think we sign them from any state.
For at least two of those reasons, two of those.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak on General Ordinance 6? If not, council?
Madam President.
Yes.
I've been tackling this since we discussed it earlier in the year, and a couple of things that I did was, you know, I was looking at the, you know, the health aspect of it, because a lot of people were talking about how they felt like it was going to be unhealthy. So I reached out to Travella Myers at the Health Department, and she didn't see any issues with the way that our ordinance was written. I also did a poll online to see what people thought, and it looked like it was almost 50/50, a little bit more for people being in favor of it. Then my other thing that I was looking at was the fact that code enforcement was having an issue, thinking that they would be able to, you know, enforce what they have, and I don't think, as disheartening it is, that they feel like they would, there would be a struggle there. I don't think that that should be a reason that we don't move forward and be progressive, doing what other communities do as well. And finally, one of the things that I always remembered when I took the seat four years ago is that ordinances can always be changed. So if we do an ordinance and we see that there's a problem with it, we can go back to it. So I'll be supporting this when we vote on it. Are you?
Yes, sir.
So did, I wish Lori Tharp was here, because I'd like...
We had, Lori goes at all the meetings, and also on the committee was Deborah Floyd, who's on the advisory committee to the code enforcement.
Right. They agree with all this?
Right. So they were involved in making the recommendations.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't specifically poll Lori and her staff if they were in agreement and everything, but Deborah voted for the recommendations, and she was in...
I know she was against it to begin with, so I was just, I would love to talk to her, which, I mean, I probably will not vote for it tonight, but that doesn't mean if we tabled it and looked at it next week and I talked to Lori.
it and looked at it next week and I talked to Lori.
Tonight's just the first reading. We don't have to move real fast on this at all.
Aye.
Councilperson Allen.
First of all, I want to thank the committee for all the hard work that they put into all this. I know you had lots of meetings and lots of struggles. I just have one question on it. On number 14 and 15, under, sorry, 6-82, where, is there a reason why we didn't go with the lot size versus having it 20 feet from any other building and five feet from a property line?
Do you want to respond to that?
You know, Amy, the first time that lot size has really come up in a formal way was just now, when Richard brought it up.
No, I brought it up when we talked about this in earlier discussions.
Okay, well, I guess I meant tying the number of chickens that you could have to the lot size, that's specifically it. The distances that are in there were, are obviously not about how big your lot is, it's more about where your other, where your neighbor's dwelling is relative to your chicken coop. That was the thing that we, that we came up with, was as being important, that we have the chicken coop be at least 20 feet away from a building that could be inhabitable by people. So that's the main thing. And then there was discussion, too, about, okay, so how far should this be away from your neighbor's lot line? But we didn't get into, like, minimum lot sizes or anything like that.
And in that way, I think it was in part because of the other models that we were looking at, the other lots from other places, ordinances from other places, and also in relation to the beekeeping law, the ordinance that we passed more recently had the same sort of configuration. That plus all the people who were involved from Purdue, from the animal, Deborah Floyd from the Animal Inspection Committee, and the people who have kept chickens before, they all thought that was a fair amount, but that's all I can tell you, that we really didn't have a big discussion about it.
Because I've worked over this, and I've talked to people, you know, in my district, on how they feel about this and stuff, and, you know, I've had some valid points made up by people, and that's why I was thinking that we were going to do some kind of lot sizes, because we have some houses in our city that are house, driveway, house, driveway, house, driveway, house, driveway, their backyards all connect the same way. So even if it is 20 feet away from said building, that's still, a lot of those backyards connect. You see where I'm going with it? And then you have some that have, you know, like my yard, I have a big yard with nobody connecting really to me. There's not an issue there. I wish, I would have just rather seen some kind of lot sizes, at least, say you have to have two lots, you know, two standard city lots in order to have them. Because we run into a lot, I know I run into a lot in my district, that all the yards just run together, and you can't even, I mean, as a form of working and out-measuring for taxes and things, a lot of times if you didn't have a map set in front of you, you couldn't tell where A stops and B starts, you know, because all the yards run together. And that's how their backyards run, and it just, even if you say it's going to be 20 feet from a garage, so you're going 20 feet from a garage, but that next person's yard is right here, I was, you know, I'm just, that was only my, my only recommendation, is that we would have went with some kind of, some kind of lot size, some kind of more structure on that. Other than that, I mean, I don't have any, I don't have any problems with the chickens, I just, you know, say, I live next to Councilman Garrison, and I want chickens, and our yards are running together, and he doesn't want them.
You need to put up a fence.
Well, I understand that, but still, you've got houses that are on top of each other.
Yeah.
You've got houses where you can stand in a house and look out your window, and you're looking in your neighbor's window, and it's the same in the backyard. I mean, some of us are lucky with bigger yards, but some of us live in subdivisions in different areas.
Some of those will be eliminated by what's there.
Right.
That's just my own recommendation.
One more question. If a chicken gets loose and the Humane Society won't take them, you are going to provide a list of chicken owners, how do you say this?
At least if people were.
You will call them, but what happens if nobody takes that chicken? What do you do with that chicken? What if you got it? I mean, do you?
They're coming to your house?
No. I mean, is that?
Can you respond to that?
One thing that.
I like the idea of the list of owners with possibly, okay, I'll take it, or what have you.
Yeah. One thing that Lori talked about, oh, wait a minute, with the list, it's, that's the way that we came up with, where they would, where, you know, they would have someplace to go. One thing that is hard to picture is, unless, until you hear the code enforcement people tell you, they're not coming to have action taken right away. They'll come and give you a warning, and give you 10 days, or.
What I'm saying is, if one gets loose, and we don't know who the owner is, and they get it, and nobody wants it, where do you go next?
We do account for that. Code enforcement officers are going to have the authority to destroy an animal.
Yes, they do with other animals.
Correct. And ironically, it did come up, the likelihood of us actually catching a chicken.
That makes for good live PD right there, chasing chickens. Realistically, a chicken's not going to travel, but maybe the next yard. So it's not like it's going to be.
I've got a fox that's running in my neighborhood with no tail, he's diseased and stuff, I mean, we can feed it to him, but, I mean, I'm just curious on what we're going to, what's the proceeding?
Well, that part is not going to be any different with chickens than it is with other animals.
So they'll destroy it.
If code enforcement picks one up, they have the authority to do that, they can't determine anything else to do with it. So that's not.
Or to the feline hog.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yeah. Councilperson Asia.
Well, first of all, I don't know that much about chickens, okay, so.
You had a question.
Yeah, I don't understand. First of all, commend the committee for their meeting on this, and I'm sure they've had a lot of hard work. However, it sounds to me like there are still a few questions about this. I don't believe this is a minor change in the city, I believe it's a major change. I'm not sure it's something that we should do in one meeting, to be totally honest, not that I'm against it, because I'm not, but I do think, I do feel there might be some other questions that come up that we may want to, you know, when we worked on the original animal ordinance, I mean, it's a year, at least, I remember. I'm not saying this should take a year, but I don't think it should be one night. I do have one other question for Eddie, and I believe I already know the answer, but I'm going to ask you anyway, see if I'm a lawyer like you. Subdivisions. If they have a covenant that restricts and says they cannot have chickens, does that override the city ordinance?
That would be a civil matter, but, I mean, I would advise someone to abide by the covenants in their particular subdivision.
What I read was that a covenant can be more restrictive than, as long as it's more restrictive and not less restrictive.
Yeah, just because we are allowing it in this code.
Doesn't mean a covenant in a subdivision would allow that.
Correct.
Because that was a question that was asked to me by several subdivision people, so.
You are a lawyer.
You are lawyers.
Oh, you are a lawyer, now.
Okay. Okay, and I agree with Mr. Shagley, you're not going to have 1,000 people going tomorrow and wanting to put chickens in their yards, we understand that. I remember when I was a kid, and I'm going back, oh, 12 years ago, my grandmother had chickens in her yard, and I remember as a kid, she cut the head off, and it slipped and went all around, and I can still remember seeing that as a little kid, so it's not something new, it's just something, you know. Anyway, I just would hope that we table this until another time. Do you like that, Amy?
I don't think we have to table it, we can just wait.
I mean, I'm sorry.
We can just.
Thank you.
Madam President. I'm not opposed to this. I do feel, however, that code enforcement may still have some concerns about it, and I agree with Councilman Asia and Councilman Nation, we can take our time on this, not a year, I don't think.
I agree.
But I think we did well in taking our time with the bee ordinance previously, and I think that we did well with that. And I think by taking our time on this, we can follow that example and do this right. Those are my thoughts, Mr. President.
Excuse me. Item 13 talks about a four-foot site fence or shrub string around the coop and the run if it's visible to adjoining lots. Is four feet intended to be taller than what the structure is?
When I asked Eddie about that, he said that it had come out of a model ordinance that he, another ordinance that he reviewed.
Okay. But I mean, theoretically, it may not cover everything.
No, right, right.
Okay. And then, I don't see what, the resolution to what came first, Doc.
I don't think it'll ever be resolved.
Aye.
Or why it crossed the road.
Well, it sounds to me like we do have a, somewhat of a consensus anyway around the table that we leave this for consideration next week, unless somebody else wants to.
Could I ask this? Code enforcement representation, be here?
Sure.
Possible. I'm going to call Lori.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Next item of business. Special Ordinance 41, 2019, reserving a property located at 1,000 North 25th Street and 2442 Second Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of council, my name is Richard Shagley, I'm with the Law Firm of Wright, Cheggerton, Missouri. And I'm here tonight representing the petition in this matter. This went through area plan last night with a favorable recommendation. There was nobody in opposition at the meeting, nor did we receive any communications prior to the meeting, nor my office, nor your firm office, of any opposition. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on Special Ordinance 41, 2019?
I really don't mean dumb up here all the time, I really don't, but as a citizen and a voter and all this other stuff, I wish they would tell us, we're going to pass a new ordinance to have this property done something else with. Can they at least tell us what it's going to be used for? I think that's fair.
Would you like to respond to that, Mr. Shagley?
For Order 41, this is going to be for, I apologize to Mr. Hyde, this is 41, yes, 41, sorry.
Yes, yeah, 41.
This is going to be for automotive service and sales. And this property's already been utilized for that previously. It has recently gone through a sale, and because of that, it needs to be cleaned up, and that's why we're here tonight. It's, the area plan may refer to a site plan, there's not going to be any major changes to this property except for some signage, and the petition intends to obviously follow all codes relating to those signs in this property. So I do apologize, Mr. Hyde, I should have mentioned that when I first stepped up to the panel.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak on Special Ordinance 41? Council?
For the benefit of the public, I'd just like to point out that everything that's in front of the city council is on the city's website, and it's been there for at least a week. If you wanted to review this paperwork prior to the meeting, it says right here on the first page that it's going to be used for automobile sales and service in this particular example. But again, the point is, everything that is in front of us is available for public viewing. So if you don't know that already, please avail yourself of it in the future. I find it impossible. And if there's no further discussion, I move that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance Number 41, 2019.
Second.
It's been, excuse me, it's been moved by Councilperson Nation and seconded by Councilperson Morris, that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance 41, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we can vote.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move for approval of Special Ordinance Number 41, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nation and seconded by Councilperson Morris, that we approve Special Ordinance 41, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is so approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item of business.
Special Ordinance 42, 2019, reserving a property located at 2405 South 6th Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioner.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Orman from the Law Firm of Cox, Warner, Gamble, and Sullivan. I'm here representing Advantage Holdings LLC. They're the property owner of 2405 South 6th Street, and we're requesting a rezone from a R1 single residence to an R1 planned development. This is a property that's a single lot, that has two detached, single-dwelling units on it that were built circa 1920s, so they have been there long before your zoning code was adopted. For a planned development, we have to show a hardship, and the hardship in this is, we've got these two dwellings on this one parcel that have been there for a long time, and also the owner of the property has issues with his financing because, because it's zoned R1, the appraiser won't assign a value to the second residence, so you can't get the full financing for the property. This is a rezoning that would be in the public's interest, it's not going to adversely affect surrounding property values or public health and safety, and it doesn't alter the general characteristics of the neighborhood. There is an R1 TD that's directly southwest of this property, right in that area already. Substantial justice will be done for that neighborhood if this rezoning is granted, and the approval of this use shouldn't have the intent of nullifying any of the purposes of the zoning code. This property, its own, excuse me, by Advantage Holdings, they have done a lot of improvements on this already, and they've remodeled both of those structures. So this planned development will be ready for use in six months, and they do have both of those structures leased. And I would also point out that there was a rezoning done that was basically this exact same situation earlier this year, Special Ordinance 11, 2019, which was for 2528 South 7th Street. Area plan did give it a favorable recommendation with no opposition. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on Special Ordinance 42?
How close to Farnington Grove, the main Farnington Grove Historical Suburb is this?
I can answer that if you want. Don, the Farnington Grove Historical District ends, the southern border of it is Holman Street, which is the 1,600 block, this is the 2,400 block.
Councilor, anyone else in the public? Council?
Madam President.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Madam President?
Yes.
If there's no further questions, I move that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance 42, 2019, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Oller and seconded by Councilperson Nasser, that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance 42. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve Special Ordinance 42, 2019, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Oller, seconded by Councilperson Nasser, that we approve Special Ordinance 42, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Special Ordinance 43, 2019, reserving a property located at 2,400 and 2,401 Third Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of council, my name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing the petition in this matter. If it's okay, I would request no action be taken, and we address this next Thursday.
That's okay.
Is there any? Table it till next Thursday?
I don't know.
We don't have to table it. It's a Thursday reading.
Yeah, just for a sec.
Okay. I think we can accommodate that.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business. Special Ordinance forty-four, two thousand nineteen, reserving a property located at fourteen eleven South Sixth Street. Area planning gave us favorable recommendation, and I need Mr. Britton to agree that there is an amendment.
That is correct.
Okay, there's an amendment before you.
Madam President, Councilman Lou Britton, I'm with Tax Warner, Gamble and Sullivan, representing the petition of Red Brick, Rebuilding State, Westbury, recently acquired this property from the Vigo County Historical Society. It is the former Vigo County Historical Society's museum. As a result of that acquisition, the property is actually now on tax rolls.
Good idea.
The property itself is located at fourteen eleven South Sixth, which is the southwest corner of Sixth and Washington. You may be aware that Red Brick has done several renovations of properties in the Farrington Grove area, and I think has established a good reputation in the area as doing responsible rehabilitation. They are proposing to convert this structure into a bed and breakfast, to be known as Sage Mansion. The property is currently zoned R2, and the local zoning ordinance does not have a classification which is appropriate for a bed and breakfast. I didn't trust my own analysis. I asked the people who really know the zoning code, the people for area plan, and they agreed, there is no specific classification in which a bed and breakfast would fit. So we have asked that the property be rezoned R2 PD to allow for a bed and breakfast. Area Plan Commission gave a unanimous recommendation to the rezoning at their meeting last night, and no one spoke in opposition. The handout which I've given you includes photographs of the exterior and interior of the building, as well as a letter from Spencer Carlson, the Vice President and Secretary of Farrington Grove Historical District, and Susan Tingley, the Executive Director of the Vigo County Historical Society, both speaking in favor of the rezoning. The property consists of a building of nearly ten thousand square feet on three floors and a basement. It was constructed in eighteen sixty-eight and sits on slightly more than one acre. Needless to say, not your usual residence. The original home was built by William Sage, and he acquired the property in eighteen sixty-four during the Civil War. It was originally known as the Sage Mansion, and that name will be returned, assuming that the rezoning is granted. Mr. Sage was a confectioner, had a fine dining restaurant, and served fresh oysters. He also had a bakery, sold toys and fireworks. His retail location was next to the Saratoga. Red Brick is proposing seven, to have seven units available for guests, each with its own bath, together with a suite for the family located on premises. They will also maintain a suite in a nearby property which they own for a maintenance person to serve the property. Conversion of the property will require extensive renovation of most of the mechanical systems serving the building, but all of the work is going to be done with a view toward preserving the historical character of the building, both inside and out. And the Lendermans have consulted extensively with historic landmarks regarding their planned renovation. Red Brick, by the way, I'm sorry, I skipped over this. Red Brick's principal is Ben Lenderman, and his wife, Debbie, will be actually in charge of operating the bed and breakfast when they get underway. She will manage that business on a daily basis and plans to be there nearly all the time. They have, they will also plan to have space available for small events, such as wedding showers and afternoon teas, and they'll provide exercise space and lounge areas for guests at the bed and breakfast. The size of the property creates a significant hardship in that it would be difficult to convert this to a two-family dwelling, ten thousand square feet to start with, you're gonna end up with pretty large apartments. In addition, the fact that there is no specific zoning classification that allows for a bed and breakfast is an almost insurmountable hardship. We have submitted, as Clerk Abely pointed out, an amended ordinance, and would ask that the council first take action to amend the special ordinance, which was originally filed, and then approve the amended special ordinance. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on Special Ordinance forty-four?
I'll kind of again. This is one of the rare buildings in the city of Terre Haute. It's historical with capital H's, spell out whole word, historical. My concern would be the, I've been to the historical museum, I photographed the entire building, every picture of what it looks like, every square inch of the building, on inside and the outside. There is nothing that does not scream historical. My concern, if you're a attorney, my, do not get me wrong, I've seen two other Red Brick on Seventh Street that, think, well, good job, but I have no problem with that. In fact, I encourage you to do it for that reason, but I would like to make sure that the, I can't put it this way, I, I'm concerned, who does the restoring it? Because, like he says, it is such a historical building, I wouldn't want him to mess around too much with the inside of the house, 'cause that's, that's your money part, that's the people who are gonna come to see, original eighteen sixty, eighteen seventy. That's why people went to the historical museum in the first place. That's all I can say, is I hope you feel careful about keeping it like it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Lenderman has restored a number of areas, a number of buildings in this area. He has consulted extensively with Historic Landmarks Foundation regarding the, his plans for this building, not only on the interior, but also the exterior. For example, the plan that they obviously need to add bathrooms in order to operate a successful bed and breakfast. People don't wanna go down the hall to the bathroom, they want a bathroom on suite. They've, they have arranged, in almost every case, to use an existing closet to house the bathroom. They have paid a great deal of attention to those minor details, and I'm confident that we will be satisfied with the end product.
Anyone else in the public who would like to comment on this?
My name is Kaylin Sanders, and I live at eight hundred South Sixth Street. And in the past twenty years, I've been an active member of Farrington's Grove Board of Directors. And in most of those twenty years, I've been the Chair of the Holiday Home Tour Committee. In that capacity, I've worked with Mary Lee Hagan and her staff at the old Vigo County Historical Museum. And it's been a bigger challenge for us to do our holiday home tour without their help, because they've moved. Mary Lee promised me that I'd be very happy to hear what the new members of the museum house had planned for that building, and she was right. I couldn't be happier to hear that Debbie Lenderman has plans to remodel that old mansion into a bed and breakfast, and I give her my full support. I support this plan for Sage Mansion, not only because it will save one of the historic district's most treasured homes, but also because I believe this project will benefit all of Terre Haute. I've visited many cities where a vital historic district is creating a thriving environment. This seems to be especially true of college towns like Terre Haute. We don't see so much of that in Farrington's Grove right now. But one example of this kind of progress is being demonstrated by the excitement and energy that Joe Everhart and Kent Ramsey have created at the Old Seminoles Tavern on Seventh Street. Aren't the Bar Bosco is not just for our neighborhood, it's for the entire town. The whole town and the reason around the city is flocking to this venue. One of the big questions in town right now is, have you seen or have been to the new Italian restaurant at Old Seminoles? And the answer I hear most often when I ask that question is, yes, I have, and I'm a regular now. I go there regularly. And I expect to hear that same question and answer once Debbie gets her new bed and breakfast open. Many of my friends, not only in the Grove, but all over this city, are anxiously waiting for Sage Mansion to open its doors. I can't pretend to speak for all my neighbors and the whole town of Terre Haute, but I have not encountered a single person who's opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who would like to speak on Special Ordinance forty-four? Okay, counsel?
I think Kaylin summed it up very well. I live in Farrington's Grove, and I, although I'm not on that board of directors, I go to meetings like every three or four months and check in with them. And I haven't run into anybody who doesn't think this is a good idea either. I'm in full support of it. I, I think it's a great idea. Thanks, I yield.
Thank you. Councilperson Nasser?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, a lot of times, we're able to give, you know, tax abatements to help people do projects like this. I think the least we can do is to rezonate, to make it happen. So if there's no other questions or comments, I make a motion that we take action on Special Ordinance forty-four, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nasser, seconded by Councilperson Nation, that we approve, excuse me, Special Ordinance forty-four.
Take action.
Oh, excuse me, that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance forty-four, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We can move forward. I do have one question before we do, though. Lou, the amendment, we have to do the amendment first, and I just had a question about the amendment. Was the amendment basically the legal description thing?
No.
Could you just describe that, Lou, that I don't believe you did in hearing, Lou?
We added some language. If you look past the description, come down, come down to the fifth line, starts, use as a bed and breakfast in small event facility, including licensing. We added, for guests, add the bed and breakfast and that schedule with them. Make it clear that we needed.
Thank you, I just think you didn't address that for me, so I wanna make sure that I understood what the amendment was before we went forward. Because I think what we need to do at this point is to bond the amendment and then on the approval of the ordinance.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to amend Special Ordinance forty-four, two thousand nineteen.
As presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison and seconded by Councilperson DeBahn, that the amendment as proposed be approved. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It is so approved.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to approve Special Ordinance forty-four, two thousand nineteen, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison, seconded by Councilperson DeBahn, that we approve Special Ordinance forty-four as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Counsel.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I had the opportunity to hear all about this from Mr. Lenderman at a meeting I was at, and this is just awesome. I think we all feel that way, but I just wanna be on the record saying that, and I yield.
Thank you.
Madam President, I would also like to be on the record saying this will be awesome. Seriously, though, in all seriousness, I, I've seen the work that Ben has done in this area, and I have no doubt that him and his wife Debbie are going to do an excellent job with this, and I really look forward to it.
I yield. I'll pat on to, you know, what they said. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? It is so approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I wish all of you a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Next item of business. Resolution thirteen, two thousand nineteen, a resolution redesignating a certain portion of Eagle Street as a Sergeant Kyle Childress, OIF, Memorial Way, and a certain portion of Eagle Street as a Sergeant Dale Griffin, OEF, Memorial Way. Petitioner.
My name is John Cunningham. I'm a resident of Terre Haute, a U.S. Army veteran. Approximately two years ago, I started looking into how to get these two soldiers some memorial way in our city, and I thank Mr. Nasser for coming along and helping me out with this. Both Sergeant Kyle Childress and Sergeant Dale Griffin both attended the Vigo County Schools, where they are both outstanding students and also extraordinary athletes. Each one of these men decided after graduation to join the United States Army and attain our tenderest, most honorable title of American soldier. Each one of these men was sent to combat for our nation and subsequently died, Kyle in Operation Iraqi Freedom, or YF, and Dale in Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. From time to time, our city will honor our local heroes, such as they did with Officer Rob Pitts and Officer Brent Wong, and rightly so. Today, I ask you to vote in favor of honoring two of our nation's greatest heroes. I thank you in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on Resolution thirteen?
Yes, I personally will say that I'm a hundred percent for this, and the only thing I would add to that is I think the city council, the county council, and the mayor are doing more of this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak on Resolution thirteen? Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
I, I had the honor of knowing Kyle Childress. He was a friend, and he's the only person in my life who I knew who then went and died while fighting for our country. I think that this is an entirely appropriate and laudable thing for us to do, and it's probably overdue. I yield.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
And, you know, when Mr. Cunningham had reached out to me a few months ago, one of the things that I did do was reach out to the families to, you know, see if they were supportive of it, and they were. So I appreciate Eddie, you know, helping me with the language on this, and, and, you know, Dale was a wrestler, my son's a wrestler, Dale was a, he went to the Marines, my son's getting ready to go to the Marines, so I went to school with Kyle, so it is, as you say, Mr. Nixon, well overdue. I yield.
If there's no questions, I'll say, ask that we approve Resolution thirteen.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilperson Morris and seconded by Councilperson Nation that we approve Resolution thirteen, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is so approved. Next item of business. Resolution sixteen, two thousand nineteen, authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation for grants. Petitioner.
Hello, Madam President, council members, I'm Debbie Hensley, Terre Haute Transit Department Head, and this resolution will allow us apply for our grant for 2020. We do this every year.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on Resolution sixteen? Thank you. Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
If there's no discussion, I move for approval of Resolution sixteen, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Been moved by Councilperson Nation and seconded by Councilperson Morris, that we approve Resolution sixteen, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is so approved. Thank you very much. Next item of business. Resolution seventeen, Resolution seventeen, two thousand nineteen, authorizing an extension of a temporary revolving loan to the Terre Haute Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you. Counsel, Madam President, Eddie Felling, City Attorney. The mayor was predisposed this evening and asked me to bring this before the council. There should be no surprises here, and just as a recap, back in June of 2019, we were still at a $2 million loan. The most recent creation or renewal of that loan was for the $1 million that was done effective July first. The purpose of this resolution is to extend that current loan through June the thirtieth. The most recent creation or renewal of that loan was for the $1 million that was done effective July 1st. The purpose of this resolution is to extend that current loan through June 30th of next year at the $1 million rate. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I don't believe that this is anything new for the council.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on Resolution 17, 2019?
First of all, answering Mr. Nation's question to me earlier, I don't have a computer. I rarely use a computer, but more important than that, there is a lot in this town. You're the City Council and you're representing 65,000 citizens. You cannot assume because we live in a quote "computer age" that everybody has access to computers, that everybody can use the computers or want to use the computers. Your job is to communicate what's going on, and you're videotaping it to the public, to those who don't have computers, who don't do this or that. Right now, I can't even get TV because, again, they changed the frequency, so I've got a house, I live six blocks from Channel 10, the big broadcast tower, I had no problems getting TV when they were using non-fiber optic stuff. I'm not alone either. A lot of people in this town can't even get TV signals, so the news and the information we're getting is less and less and less. And you guys sometimes are bothered by me when I ask simple questions. I agree, it is a little bashing, but as a same token, we have to, if you want people to come to the City Council meeting and hear and understand what's going on, you've got to make it possible for them to understand what you're talking about. This, a simple question, we're borrowing a million dollars and we're going to extend it to next year. Fine, but at least have the decency to tell us what the million dollars is for.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak on Resolution 17, 2019?
The million dollars.
Mr. Hyde, first of all, I'll give Mr. Felling a chance to answer your question, I'm sure he will, but we need to operate within the confines of the meeting, please. Thank you. Mr. Felling?
The million dollars will assist with cash flow purposes, it can be used in the general fund, really where it's needed, and the importance for extending it beyond December 31st is to have that money be in the accounts as it carries over from December 31st until January 1st. What we've been able to do in the past is do a payback and then start a new one immediately thereafter. Because we've gotten this down to the million dollar mark, we're just going to need to carry it over until the next year. So, again, we anticipate these, the TAW and this redevelopment loan, that those monies that are required that we borrow continue to be lowered, and I know the general preference from the administration has been that we do this through the redevelopment loans because there are no additional costs associated with that, like there is with the tax anticipation warrants, which we will be coming back in January and asking for those to be renewed.
Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
I note that half of this is coming from the downtown taxing increment finance district and the other half is coming from the State Road 46 Tax Increment Finance District. Is that a change or was it that way before?
This is the same as it was previously, and I don't know if the council received the email from Mr. Witt earlier today. We always approach the Redevelopment Commission to essentially get a preference of where they'd rather see the money come from, and I, Counselperson Nation, I know you've been concerned about the downtown TIF, and we had previously, when we were up at that $5 million mark, allocated that money more towards the 46 as best we could, however, that is our bigger TIF here in town, so.
Yeah, so this one's 50/50, and I applaud you for that. As I think about the downtown TIF and the things that we've pledged to do with downtown TIF under this administration's suggestions, I think about the half a million dollars a year that we pledged to shore up the convention center going forward. I think about the four and a half million dollars that we pledged to build a parking garage, which has now been deemed inadequate, I guess, not enough money, so they're exploring surface parking in downtown Terre Haute. And I think about the mayor's stated goal of police station and building a police station out of downtown TIF money. And then there are, of course, all the other things that we do with downtown TIF money that are important too. The point is that we are obligating this money into the future, and I think that it's important that we don't just look at the downtown TIF. I applaud the administration for reaching into the State Road 46 TIF also to come up with the million dollars to help keep the doors of government open going forward next year. And that's it, I'll stop there, I just wanted to get those things out into the public yet again. I yield.
Yeah, Madam President, I'm trying to recall three and a half years ago or so when we did first authorize the borrowing from redevelopments, was that 3.5 at the time that we took from redevelopment?
I believe it was 5.5.
Okay, now we're down to $1 million. I really, I think that's a significant progress being made with that. As I've said before, I do not like taking that money from redevelopment, but I do feel it is a necessity. I do hope and believe that very soon we can stop this practice, though, and I look forward to this. But again, I do ask that we keep in mind the progress we have made on this. I don't think any of us like taking the money from redevelopment, but we're doing a lot better, and I think we'll be in a position where we can stop doing this soon. I yield.
Yeah, I pulled out the comprehensive plan that we got a few months ago. Our short-term borrowings between the tax anticipation warrant and the Department of Redevelopment for 2017 was 9 million, 2018 was a total of 6 million, 2019 was a total of 4.5 million. The proposed for 2020 is 4 million, between the TAW that's coming next week, and then the projected for 2021 is zero. So, you know, if the projection is 2021 for zero and I'm firmly committed to zero for 2021, I can support, I think, 4 million for 2020. I think the issue is probably the, well, it's about $3 million needed for Lafayette Avenue, you know, our side of that, that's probably the one item that's kept, is going to keep that at 4 million as opposed to 3 or 2.5. That's a big chunk of money, but yet that's a project that, you know, needed pretty badly, our 20%, so. I yield. Madam President?
Yes.
First off, I want, I know Mr. Nation can defend himself, Mr. Hyde, but I think out of everybody on this council, Mr. Nation has been very good about educating the public, whether it comes with amendments and how our process works. I commend you for coming to every council meeting, you're always here, in fact, I think you're a celebrity on our videos now because everybody sees you and stuff, but to say that people on this council aren't patient with you and trying to explain how things were, I just think that that was, I want to explain that, you know, we are very patient with you, we've done these loans multiple times, each year we do these loans, so of course, we probably need to explain it a little bit better, but, you know, I kind of think that saying that Mr. Nation was out of line trying to explain to the public how we go about putting stuff on the internet was a little out of line in my opinion.
You do not have the floor, Mr. Hyde.
With that being said, yes, with that being said, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 17, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Nasser and seconded by Counselperson Elliott, that we approve Resolution 17, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So it is two opposed. And myself. And yourself, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Next item of business?
Resolution 19, 2019, approving an amended Terre Haute enforcement response plan.
Petitioner?
Hello, Deborah Fajid, Toronto Wastewater Director. This document is something that we have to send to the EPA every five years, we have to reevaluate our local ordinance every five years, and this is just one part of it. We use this to inform the industries of the regulations that are in the ordinance, so that, and basically it regulates their pollutants that they're discharging, and this tells them what will happen if certain things occur. And the EPA required us to make, sorry, they didn't require, they recommended that we make five changes, so. And then they asked that you approve this, and we send it back to them, they approve it, and it's done.
So, am I correct in understanding that this does take care of all those things that they're concerned about?
Yes, yes, we made the five changes, I just need your approval and then I send it back to them.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on Resolution 19, 2019? Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
There's no further questions, I mean that we approve Resolution 19, 2019 as presented. Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Oller and seconded by Counselperson Elliott, that we approve Resolution 19, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item will be very happy that you approve their recommendations.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Nasser, and seconded by Counselperson Nasser, that we adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.